Good evening, we'd like to welcome you to the Barber Center here at Hillsdale College. I'm President Eaton and it's our pleasure to host this event on behalf of our city and our public. When we designed this building, we designed it to be a place for the college and the community together. So whether we're here at the council's forum or in our small auditorium in Navy Hall for our financial piece that is open to the public or upstairs in our evening school college classes. This morning, we had Black History Month presentation and so the stage was full at that point of 19 and 20-year-olds. So I'm the craziest guy in Moore because my whole life depends on the decisions of 18, 19, and 20-year-olds. And so, but I'm glad to have you here because I know you are going to make decisions in your voting and so I would like to introduce our two moderators and then I will be out of your way. Pat McFerrin is Republican, founding partner of OMA Strategies and he's highly successful accounting firm who's also regarded as one of the most experienced and successful players in the business of professional campaigns and issues management. Ben Odom, our Democrat, is a successful Norman attorney. He's a former congressional candidate and also former vice chair of their former Democratic Party. Ben has served as chair of the Cleveland County Democratic Party and is a frequent commentator in the media on political issues. And so, all with no more further ado, I turn this to our moderators.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we appreciate the introduction. And on behalf of MoreMonthly.com, we are glad to have you here this evening. And one or two housekeeping announcements are that our timekeeper, Rob, is going to be our timekeeper down here. We're going to pretty strictly keep to those limits so you'll get to learn the magic of 30-second soundbites here as candidates. And also that we're not here to play gotcha tonight. Pat?
I want this to be an educational experience for everybody and we will push on.
And we'll see what we can do about keeping sure it's an educational experience for the voters and for the community of Moore. And so, we're going to start in kind of a reverse order. We're going to do Ward 3 first, then Ward 2, then Ward 1, and then the mayor's race where everyone has the opportunity to be involved. And Pat, this should be a lot of privacy.
No, I'm looking forward to it. It's always great to be on Hillsdale's campus here. I've had the pleasure of speaking to a couple of classes here from time to time. But I wanted to go a little bit over the format we have here, a little bit different than some of the basic forms that we have. What we're going to try to do is really get a discussion going as much as just answering a question and going back and forth. With the two candidates, we'll work this where we have first opening statements for everybody and then we'll have three questions to them. They'll rotate who answers at first. For the first two questions, we have the two candidates. It will go, one candidate with 60 seconds, 45 seconds, and a 45-second rebuttal on the first two questions. And the last question, each one will get 60 seconds to answer. We have the third, we have three candidates that form slightly different. We've actually randomly picked which candidate you are, A, B, or C. In this case, A and B. And we have Terry Kabner designated as candidate A for Ward 3 and Larry Teskey as candidate B. As such, we're ready to start it here. So ask Terry Kabner to, he has 30 seconds to basically introduce himself and then we'll follow that with Mr. Teskey and then we'll go to the questions. So yeah, go ahead and you left the voting.
Hey, I'm Terry Kabner. I've been on the city council for nine and a half years. Grew up in the metro. Graduated from UCO, top school in Moore High School back in the 70s. I'm on the Cabinet Insurance Agency Board. Been 30 years, October 1. My wife, Amanda, is here. We have been married 38 years. She taught school 20 years, the last 14 were to Habsburg Elementary, which is near Moore. We have one son, Brandon, graduated from Westmore.
My name is Larry Teskey. I moved here, moved to Moore in 2010. I too am a retired school teacher, retired from teaching in Oklahoma. I always was interested in politics and now that I'm retired, I have plenty of time to get involved and I'm going to start somewhere. Born and raised in Oklahoma, by the way, graduated from UCO, Masters in Teaching.
Thank you, gentlemen. Glad to see fellow UCO graduates on the stage here. Our first question for this evening, and Mr. Teskey will start with a 60-second response to this and then Mr. Kabner will have 45 seconds rebuttal and Mr. Teskey will get another 45 seconds to respond to that. And first question for the evening, if the city had an extra million dollars, what would you spend it on?
Road repair, improving the recycling in the community, repairing the streets that need to be repaired in the city, neighborhoods that need repair. And yeah, that's basically what I would do.
Mr. Kabner, 45 seconds. If the city had an extra million dollars, what would you spend it on?
I actually probably won't disagree with that. We did pass a half-cent sales tax that will bring in approximately $3 million over the next four years that we have designated for specifically residential streets and we've made huge improvements in that area. A million dollars actually doesn't go very far in the streets, but I would think if we have an infrastructure issue right now, it probably is our residential streets. So I really don't disagree with where Larry's coming from. That's a good answer.
All right, you have 45 more seconds. Do you have anything else you want to say? Okay, you'll wave that to the pool. And now time for our second question. Pat?
Okay, and well, Mr. Kabner, you'll be up first. Do you want to go ahead and head that direction? What would you do to help Moore residents develop a deeper sense of community ownership?
You know, we have actually been amazing the last 10 years and I think we've come a long way in that direction already. Having a business that has traffic flow on a daily basis, I get awesome comments from our citizens and we have just absolutely done amazing things. But we've got a proposal out right now that we just got from our Parks Department on spending about $40 million on our Parks Department over the next 10 or 12 years that would put us in a situation that I think for the city our size, second to nobody in the state of Oklahoma. We won't have to look down to Oklahoma City or Norman or Edmond or anybody else. When I was chamber president, back about 15 years ago, we looked at what were our assets. Our assets in this community were our young families and our kids. And I feel like that's probably the one, the next area. We've done so many awesome things. Our next area is our Parks Department. And I honestly just am excited about the proposal that the Parks Board brought to us here just in the last month.
I've just, I am impressed with Moore. Lived here for two years. My sister lives here and I'd visit her every year, summertime and during holidays. I lived and worked in England for seven years. And to come here and visit her and just be, to see how Moore has grown, I don't know what I could offer right now as any suggestion, but this is just a great place to live and yeah, so.
Just to continue with that is if you haven't looked at the proposal, I think you can see it online at this point, am I right, do you? Look at what they're looking at. This proposal is an awesome deal and it's about a feel-good deal as we have come up with yet. And we've had some awesome feel-good deals the last 10 years.
Thank you, candidates. And your last question for the evening, and you each get 60 seconds in response to this, is what are your top three priorities for the city of Moore? Top three priorities for the city of Moore?
I said earlier, street repair, improve the recycling to include glass and other objects like that, and just work with the mayor and the other council, city council members to do, you know, what we can do to improve the city. I know I'm new at this and I have a lot to learn, but yeah, I believe in working with the council and making this, continue to make this a great place to live. Thank you.
I think, well, everything that we've talked about over the last 10 years has been quality of life. I think everybody here is excited about economic development. We've got some more cool stuff coming, you know. We're this close to a really exciting announcement. That excites me and I think it excites you. The Parks presentation that I mentioned a while ago, that is going to be an exciting part of what the city comes over, over the next 10 years. And then I'll go back to the, again, one of the previous questions. I think one of the biggest problems we have is our residential rates. We've made huge improvements in that direction. We're going to continue to make those improvements. I have full faith in our city manager and our department heads and the money that, the money that you have paid us, you can see that has gone to work. See what we've done with it and I think you can be proud of that.
Okay, it's, time's flying by. It's hard to believe you guys have been up there for over 10 minutes now. We're getting close to that. We have 45 seconds each for closing statements and I believe, Mr. Teskey, you're up first.
I know I'm a first time and if I'm elected, I'll be a new council member, but I'd just like to mention I'm retired and I can vote full-time to this position. Okay? So that's, yeah. I think I'll finish this up with saying, I guess it's kind of a repeat again, but look at what we've done the last 10 years. And it's not me, it's the whole team. The council, the city manager, assistant city manager, our department heads. We have put together a team that is second to nobody in the state of Oklahoma. And I'm sure that the folks running against us are quality people. I don't question that. But why mess up a winning team? You know, I am proud of who we are, what we've done, and I'm excited about what we're going to bring to you in the future. Honestly, I'm asking for your vote. Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. And a round of applause for everybody. Take courage and put your name on the ballot. We appreciate your comments here this evening. If we could have the candidates for Ward 2 come up to the stage, please.
We'll again start with the very quick 30-second intro. Just so you know, the candidates A, B, and C are, A is Mark Ham, he'll be going first, Janie Mylum second, and Troy Nelson third on the opening statements.
Hello, my name is Mark Ham. I've lived in Moore all my 45 years, graduated from Moore High School in 1986, attended First Baptist Church of Moore, served in various leadership positions in there, spent 13 years at Cleveland County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff. And I love my community. It's a great place to live and would be honored to have the opportunity to serve in a leadership position to ensure that the needs, the concerns, and issues of Ward 2 are being heard at our city council meeting. The three things that I'm interested in is our residential streets, sidewalks, prioritize the city's spending, and we need a bridge at I-35 and 30th and 4th Street.
Thanks, Mylum.
Good evening. I'm Janie Mylum and I have been making more my home for 43 years. My husband, Clinton, and I have two sons and I am very involved in our community. I actually have memberships and hold offices in the Old Town Association, the Chamber, the Moore Rotary Club, and Aging Services. I also help raise funds for our community for several nonprofits, Food for Kids, the American Red Cross, and Relay for Life. I have been a member of the city council since July 2003.
Hi, my name's Troy Nelson. I'm currently a teacher at Moore High School and very active in the community. I think the interactions that I have with the community will help me make a positive difference as a council member. And if you'd like more information about me, please visit my website at votroynelson.com.
Thank you, candidates. And our first question, the format here will be that Mark Ham will have 60 seconds, then Troy Nelson 45 seconds, then Ms. Mylum 45 seconds, and then Mr. Ham, you'll get 30 seconds to finish back up again on our first question. Our first question to the panel of candidates, are you for or against continuing massive business growth and development in Moore? And if so, are you for or against, why?
Well, I'm obviously, I would be for the growth and development in Moore. Those tax dollars are going to allow us as a community to do great things, to upkeep our infrastructure, to do a lot of these improvements that we're wanting to do with our parks. Maybe we won't even have to raise our sales tax. We won't have to sell bonds in order to fund that project because of our growth and development that's coming. But however, we do need to keep up with that building. We do need to keep up with that infrastructure. A bridge at 34th and I-35 would help do that, to alleviate some of this traffic on 19th. I know that the city has pushed for that before, but I think it's time that we revisit that. And it may mean that the city has to contribute a little more than it has in the past as far as funding a project like that. There are millions of dollars and if you want to build a bridge, it's not going to happen tomorrow. In fact, in the Oklahoma Department of Transportation's eight-year plan, there's not even funding, there's, that's not in their plan to build a bridge there. So if we're waiting on the state, if we're waiting on the federal government to come to take care of our needs, it's going to be a while.
Mr. Nelson, 45 seconds.
I believe that having businesses to, will help ultimately Moore grow. Having the businesses in the right area of the city, I think, is critical. As a representative of Ward 2, I'd like to see the parks and recreation develop more in Ward 2. We've got strong commercial industrial-type businesses, which is further south, and I'd like to keep that down there. And ultimately, I think if we have businesses that will give us the revenue, we will have more money to produce a stronger quality of life in Moore.
Janie Mylum, you have 45 seconds.
I want Moore to be a great place to live, to work, and to play, as well as to shop. And through economic development, we can continue to do the kinds of things that we need to do to provide the services to our citizens with that tax revenue. It is important that we have that revenue to provide the quality services that we have and to continue to look at services that we can provide in the future. I think that it's important to keep up with and to have our community have a wonderful appearance as well. And to do that, you need that revenue. And that would help us with landscaping, that would help us with improving our parks and working with our city streets and trying to repair those residential areas that need to be repaired. I think it is extremely important that we all take into consideration the economic development and the force that it has in playing a part in revenue in our community.
And Mr. Ham, 30 seconds.
Again, just to continue with what I was saying before, just keeping up with our current city's infrastructure. As I've walked Ward 2, I've been able to snap just a few photographs of some of our infrastructure. I know this will be hard for you to see from out there, but this is one of our sidewalks. And this didn't happen last year or even two years ago. It's been that way for years. Here's a picture of another sidewalk. All over in Ward 2, there are issues with our city's infrastructure, with residential streets, with sidewalks, that we need to take care of. So if we're going to have continued growth and development, that's a wonderful thing, but let's take care of what we have.
All right. Thank you. We'll get ready for question two now. Just so you're aware, it'll be Ms. Mylum for 60 seconds, followed by Mr. Ham for 45, Mr. Nelson for 45, and Ms. Mylum will close with 30 seconds. This question is one that comes from the audience. Please talk about something in Moore which you are proud and how that can be an asset for the city.
Although I am very proud of our economic development, the new fire stations, the work that's being done on our residential streets, the wastewater treatment and the public safety center that's being built, I am very passionate about Old Town. Old Town is the heart and the history of our city. There are some very enthusiastic business owners there who are really working to improve our economic growth and the well-being of our city. They are dedicated to improving, beautifying, and also into preserving the downtown area. Currently, we have the Public Safety Center that's going to be built at Main and Broadway and the First United Methodist Church is building a new Christian Life Center. Those are both wonderful additions to the downtown area. In addition, the business owners get very involved in activities and they either help, host, or sponsor activities like Haunt Old Town, Christmas in Old Town, and Big Wheel Nationals. The people are so enthusiastic and want to bring people into our area. They are very passionate about creating a quality of business and environment for themselves and the community.
Mr. Ham, 45 seconds.
I'm, there are a lot of great things in the community in my 45 years. I'm proud of the people. Our community is no stranger to disaster, where homes have been destroyed, people have been displaced, and regardless of a person's political affiliation or whatever, we as a community come together during those times of need. And during the tornado, we, if you were here then, we were helping feed people, we were helping house people. The church that I go to became, for that neighborhood just said, "Go to the cross, go to the church." So I am most proud of the people of Moore. And that's what Moore is. Moore is not Walmart or Target or any of these other national chains that are coming here. I'm grateful for them and appreciative of them, but that's not what Moore is. It's the people.
Mr. Nelson, 45 seconds.
Being a lifelong community member, I think a couple of things I'm very proud of is our Little League programs that we have. I grew up and I was a part of that. Also, I think that our school district is something to be very proud of. Moore Public Schools is the third-largest school district in the state of Oklahoma and it's, it's very good that our community and our schools are representing the city of Moore very, very well. I think that creates a sense of ownership and something I'm very proud of. And I think it's very important that the council understands that there needs to be a very close relationship between the school and the city council decisions.
Ms. Mylum for 30 seconds, close on this.
As I said, I'm very proud of the Old Town area, but I also, as Mr. Ham, very proud of our people. Recently, they passed a half-cent dedicated sales tax that allowed us to build four, or three new fire stations, placing four in each quadrant of the city. In addition, we have been able to spend some of that money to build our new public safety center that will be in the Old Town area. And we are currently using 80% of those funds to repair our residential streets. And that's happening in each ward in our city. And I think that that's extremely important, that we approach the needs and we do provide the services that our citizens request and desire.
Thank you. Now it's time for the third and final question for this panel of candidates. The order will be Mr. Nelson will have 60 seconds, Janie Mylum 45 seconds, Mark Ham 45 seconds, then back to Mr. Nelson again for 30 seconds on the third question, which is, what are the top three priorities for your ward and how do you get the representatives of the other wards on the council to support projects in your ward?
I think the top three in our ward would be safety, quality of life, and improving the infrastructure. That is, improving the infrastructure, I think there's been a disconnect in Ward 2 and I think that to get involvement from the other city council members in properly representing Ward 2, we could simply go out and drive the streets and walk the streets and take pictures and take video and show them what is happening in Ward 2. I think that would gain support and they would understand, have an understanding what needs to take place. And the safety issue, I think that's an easy one. I believe that all city council members would want to keep all citizens safe regardless of the ward that they're in.
I too agree that one of our top priorities is the infrastructure and taking care of our city streets, but I also think that in Ward 2, we need to look at the opportunities not only for park areas in areas other than Buck Thomas, but we need to look at Buck Thomas as well and we need to see how we can expand that particular park and provide the kinds of services there that our citizens desire and that we need to have for our sports that take place in that particular area.
Promoting all areas of growth in our city. There's a lot happening down here at 19th and I-35, but there's more to our city than just this area. So it's working together with the city council. When all this is said and done, regardless of who the new city council is, they're going to have the same goal and that's to ensure that they're providing the best services for the city. So that's what I would do. Things that I've talked about, infrastructure issues, roads, sidewalks. Each ward has two city council people and there's no reason that things like this should not be attended to. This, again, didn't happen yesterday. This has been going on for years. And it's important that the city council address those needs at a city council meeting to make the city manager aware of where those revenue, where those dollars, where those resources need to be spent.
Mr. Nelson, 30 seconds.
Just to reiterate, the infrastructure of Ward 2 needs to be addressed and I think that having someone who is, has just a passion and is enthusiastic about getting these street projects fixed in Ward 2 will help convince the other council members that something needs to be done.
Okay, we're ready for closing. These will be 45 seconds and the order will be Janie Mylum, Mark Ham, and then Troy Nelson.
I want to thank you for inviting us here tonight and allowing us to share our thoughts and our ideas. I want you to know that I will work hard to continue to make Moore a progressive city with a commitment to a quality community. I think that it is extremely important that Moore is a great place to live, a great place to work, a great place to shop and to play. I think that we as a city council can work together as a team and we can make those things happen in our community. You can make that happen by voting for, or reelection for myself and our other city council members that make up the winning team that we have currently. Thank you.
All power in government comes from a consensus of the government. You, the people, choose who it is. You, the people, choose who it is that you want to represent you. Too often in our municipal government, in the city of Moore, city council people have been appointed to those positions. As a city council person, I work for you, the people who have elected me, not for somebody that has appointed me. My loyalty are to the people of Ward Two, and to go to city council meetings and to be sure that those issues that we have in Ward Two are being heard, and if they're not being addressed, that you bring it up again. Just one quick example, the city voted, took through $15,000 for additional fireworks this year, so we could go from $25,000 to $40,000. Firecrackers are great, but those pictures that I showed you of the infrastructures issues, those things need to be addressed.
I'm very excited to have the opportunity to come and speak with all of you today, so thank you very much for allowing me to do that. I would simply ask that you vote for me to represent you. I may be new to city council, but I'm not new to these type of business decisions. Previously, I worked for Radio Shack for seven years, and I made many decisions regarding revenues, inventory, HR issues, risk management, and so forth, and I do have the experience to do a very good job for you. I will listen with an open ear, and I will make careful decisions to make the best improvements for the city of Moore. Thank you very much.
Let's have a round of applause to these Ward Two candidates. It may look easy to get up here and talk bad, but it's a little bit more of a gut check sometimes than people think, to stand up in front of people, talk about the issues. If we could have the Ward One candidates come forward, please, at this time.
While they're coming up forward, we remind everybody that you can see Ben and I in more confrontational manner on moremonthly.com on a weekly basis with our political insider show, and it's my understanding that this will be available on there as well. Okay, this is where moderators go on the fly, because I guess we had one of the candidates not make it on time here. So as I have not introduced to you, who do we have here?
Dave Roberts.
Dave Roberts.
Kyle Shiplett.
Kyle Shiplett, okay. We'll revert kind of back to the format that we had for Ward Three, and we will start with 45, I'm sorry, 30-second introductions. And we have Mr. Roberts first for that 30 seconds.
I'm Dave Roberts. I was born and raised in South Oklahoma City, have lived in Moore now for 29 years. My education consists of a bachelor's and master's degree from UCO, as well as a professional certification in education from University of Oklahoma. My wife, to whom I have been married 39 years, is Brenda, who is the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce here in Moore. Most of my working career was in the area of career tech, and for 20 years, I was finance director at Moore Norman Technology Center.
Okay, Mr. Shiplett.
Hello, my name is Kyle Shiplett. I have lived in Moore for 23 years. I bought my first house in Moore. I am originally from Davis, Oklahoma, Southern Oklahoma. I moved to the city. I took a career with Cargill Downtown Oklahoma City. I've been with that facility for 23 years also. I'm the assistant plant manager there. I have three children who are growing up in Moore, and I'm looking forward to this tonight to answer questions to what Moore is about.
You might want to go ahead and stay at the podium, because you're up first with our first question, and what we'll do here is you'll get 60 seconds, we'll have 45 for Mr. Roberts to respond, and then you'll have another 45 seconds to close. In your opinion, what is the biggest challenge Moore is facing in the next 10 years?
Sustainable growth. I feel like Moore, the city council persons that we have today have done a wonderful job the past 10 years. When I bought my first house here, there wasn't anything but a Walmart, had to converge us, and the growth around I-35 and Lowe's and Home Depot in the past 10 years, it just boomed. To sustain that growth, I think we need to be cautious, and we need to be aware of our citizens and give them an opportunity. I am a professional that doesn't work anymore. I live, and I play, and I enjoy the parks anymore. So I travel outside of Moore, but I spend most of my money and my time here. This is where my home is. And so I want to look out for the citizens to ensure that our growth is sustainable, that our police force adapts, and is large enough to help and protect the safety of our citizens in all aspects of the city, largest ward.
Mr. Roberts, 45 seconds.
As far as the biggest challenge, there are some major challenges, and as previously mentioned, one of them is the bridge here, right up the road here across Interstate 35. But I might say, one reason that's a big challenge is the price tag on it, and the federal government is no longer participating in projects like that. So that $20 million price tag is pretty much going to have to be borne by the citizens of Moore if we do that. Now, as far as sustainable growth and building an infrastructure for that, we are about to bring online a $50 million sewage treatment plant that will be state-of-the-art, be known like it in the U.S., and our water resources, because of our partnership with Oklahoma City, is in excellent shape.
All right, 45 seconds to close on this question.
I agree. I think we need to not forget the citizens, the bridge, the roads. I think if we get engaged citizens in our community, and Moore is a very engaging community, I know I've lived here for many years, and I've worked outside of the community, but I feel like the citizens of Moore are the most important part of our city, and if it is a bridge that they need, they'll tell us, and if they want to pay for the bridge, it'll get paid for. So I think the decisions that we have to support our city management, we have to support our board members, our parks and recreation, the sewage treatment plant is wonderful. I mean, we're getting rid of a lot of things, air smell, and it's, our citizens have asked for it. So I think if we support our citizens...
All right, time for our second question, and in this case, Mr. Roberts will go first with 60 seconds, and Mr. Shiplett 45 seconds, then Mr. Roberts again for 45 seconds on this one. This one is an interesting question, I think, because it can be very revealing. Please describe the city of Moore in one sentence and explain your choice of how you describe it.
I liked the description that Bill Warren gave the other night at the opening of the IMAX, in that he said, "Moore has become the queen city of the state of Oklahoma." And I'll just stay with that, because I think what Moore offers today is a fulfillment of what we started out with. I know the mayor has been in this longer than anybody else, but I've been the second-longest-serving person on city council. And our purpose was to make Moore the very best place to live in the state of Oklahoma. When I first came on the council, I couldn't buy a suit of clothes that would fit me in the city limits of Moore. There were lots of other things that I couldn't buy in the city of Moore. That no longer is the case. Everything that I need is found in the city of Moore. Recreational opportunities abound in this city, so I'm very pleased with that.
Mr. Shiplett, 45 seconds.
Moore is my home. It's where I live. It's where my family is raised. I'm very passionate about the community. So I think the growth that Moore has sustained over the past 10 to 12, 15 years, as the ball has started rolling, I feel like it being my home, it's just part of my community and my neighbors, and we have to take care of their needs, whatever it may be.
And Mr. Roberts, you have another 45 seconds. We choose to use it.
You know, I stand a little differently than a lot of people do, because my wife and I, we have no children. And I think, and at various times, you know, as you reflect upon your personal values and so forth, and I think, well, what is my legacy going to be and so forth? And I hope that part of my legacy is that I have, in my time served on the Moore City Council, and as a part of the Moore community, that it can be said that I did well and left Moore a better place to live than when I first came on the city council. I'm not through yet, and still want to continue that part of my life, but that's where I am.
Mr. Roberts, you want to stay up there? We've got the next question here. You'll have 60 seconds to answer it, and the question is, what are your top three priorities for the city of Moore and your ward in particular?
You know, one of the things that I think has been very beneficial in our current council is, when we come to council, we understand that we represent a certain section of the city, but those ward boundaries are never discussed in a city council meeting, as to, you know, well, somebody over here in Ward One, they're getting more than I am, or somebody in Ward Two's getting this and getting that. No, we work as a unit, and we address all areas of the city and so forth. Now, as far as individual projects, I have some pet ones, and they really are tied in with our recreational and our parks program. You know, I would like to see, and we've had discussion with the YMCA of Gregory Oklahoma City on building a Y facility here in this community. Another project that we've got going, and we're working with a group in Oklahoma City on that, and that's a playground at Buck Thomas Park that is specifically designed for handicapped children.
Safety, engagement, and sustainable growth. I think those are three most important things that a person has to reflect on as citizens of Moore. The safety, that we have the police force, the fire, and the municipalities to service us. Ward's collaboration is a must. There shouldn't be any difference, because there's 56,000 citizens in Moore that all have a right to be representative, and to, whether they have a store out front on I-35 or they have a two acres establishment three miles from I-35, they're all part of the community. And so if we keep them safe, we get them engaged in their community, and sustainable growth of our great city management, to be able to service the needs of the community, will win. Moore will be everything you all expected to be.
And thank you, gentlemen, and we have 45-second closing statements, and Mr. Shiplett, actually, you'll go first on that. 45 seconds.
I've said a lot, I've said it quite a bit, mouthful. One of the council members said, "We've had a winning team." You're right. How can I be a part of that team? I want to be a part of that. I want to represent the citizens of Moore. I am probably the majority that doesn't work inside Moore city limits. I have to travel for my career to downtown Oklahoma City, but this is where I stay, this is where I raise my family, this is where my values are, and I do not want the city to, if we can't sustain our growth, to end up like other cities around Metroplex that are having problems today with crime and safety issues. We have to recognize that now and have that sustainable growth for the city of Moore.
And Mr. Roberts, 45 seconds.
You know, I'm very proud of Moore. I'm proud of not only the city government, but the public schools that exist here, as well as other institutions, and our partnership with those schools. But as we move forward, I think that the current city council and the city staff, and I think we have an excellent city staff, but I think we have taken into consideration areas such as the wastewater treatment plant, the water issue, and now we're addressing the streets. And let me say this, those streets didn't get into bad shape overnight. Many of them were poorly built back in the '60s and '70s, and we're playing catch-up in that regard, so, but I think we can move forward in great strides.
Thank you. Let's have a round of applause for your Ward One candidates. And now if we could have our mayoral candidates come forward, please. And Pat, we've got some slightly different timelines for these candidates that are going to get a little bit additional time here to answer some of the questions, and so if you want to go over the timeline with them.
What we'll do here is we'll have opening statements of 60 seconds each, and then we'll do, again, three questions. The first round will be 60 seconds, 60, then 45 for whoever has the original question, then 60, 60, and 45, and then the third question. We'll just do two 60, 60 seconds, 60 seconds, and then you'll have one minute to close. Our coin flip here, Brandy Hill is candidate A, and Glenn Lewis is candidate B, so we'll start with Brandy, 60 seconds.
My name's Brandy Hill. I grew up in the town, the city of Moore. I currently, I'm married, have been for two years, have two beautiful children that I'm bringing up. When I was not living in Moore, I fought like crazy to get a house in Moore, to get my daughter into Moore Public Schools. I am currently going back, I'm a paramedic right now, currently going back to get my degree in education. I love the town of the city of Moore and would love to work for you guys.
Mr. Lewis.
Before my time starts, I want to say thank you to the college, and especially to me for providing this venue. This is very nice. Okay, I'm going to start my time now. My name is Glenn Lewis, and I am the mayor of Moore. I've been the mayor since 1994. That's a long time. I'm married to my wife Pam. Who am I, couldn't do this job without her. She teaches at Broadmore, and I have a lovely daughter, Laura, and, let's see, she works for the NSA, so we're quite proud of her. And I love my job. This is the greatest job in the world. I have the best city council and the best teammates that you could ask for, the best city employees. You couldn't ask for a better team. We worked hard at bringing all this together, and I'm very appreciative of having this job, and I would like to continue it. Thank you.
All right, candidates, we'll go to the first question, and Mr. Lewis, stay up there, because you get to go first on this one for 60 seconds, then Ms. Hill and Mr. Lewis for 45 seconds on this one. Where do you see Moore in 20 years, and what will you do to make certain that that particular vision is achieved?
Well, I hope I'm around in 20 years. One of the things that we want to concentrate on, of course, you've heard this tonight several times, is the quality of life. We think we're doing a lot to fix our infrastructure. We're working on our streets. We just passed a sales tax, and by the way, the sales tax is almost the same as it was 18 years ago, when I first started. The city is going to have a different look. We've got a lot of stuff we've just started on building, and I'm looking forward towards the future. I think it's nice that our citizens don't have to go, our young people won't have to go outside of the city of Moore to look for a job. I hope they can find a career here. So I think the city has a bright future, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Ms. Hill?
In 20 years, I'd like to see Moore be, I don't want people to come and tell me, "Well, you know, Oklahoma City is doing this better than Moore. Norman's doing this better than Moore." I want Moore to be a city that people are proud to live in, a city that people want to come from Norman to work in, and want to come from Norman, you know, to come to our theaters and come to do their shopping here in Moore, and then eventually, you know, have people move into Moore. I know that sounds bad to take them out of Norman, too, and everywhere else, but I want Moore to be that town, that town that everybody wants to visit, that town that everybody needs to actually go to and see, and have on their bucket list to get there before, you know, everybody's bucket listing. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, 45 seconds.
I don't know how many of you lived here 20 years ago, but nine out of 10 people who lived here 20 years ago didn't ever tell anybody when they went outside the city limits of Moore that they lived in Moore. They were from Oklahoma City, and I'm just very proud of the fact that we now tell people that we're for Moore. Thank you.
All right, our second question here. Ms. Hill, you'll be starting with this. All right, our second question here, Ms. Hill, you'll be starting with this. The future of Moore is likely tied to the future of greater central Oklahoma in general, and Oklahoma City and Norman in particular. Are there issues where you think Moore can improve its partnership with other communities, and if so, what are they?
To grow, you're going to have to improve your communications and your partnerships with other cities. One thing is our emergencies department, having them grow. We sit, I don't know if y'all noticed, but Midwest City ambulance service runs our city. At times, I've seen IMSA in here. IMSA comes in behind Midwest City when Midwest City is running short on ambulances. Growing, you know, the partnerships, Oklahoma City and Moore's fire department need to, you know, be working together, and this will all help our community grow.
Mr. Lewis, 60 seconds.
We already work together with a lot of cities around here. We've worked together with Oklahoma City on water issues, but frankly, I don't really care what they do. I, I think, you know, people put blinders on horses. If they run a race, that's so they can't see the other horse going inside them. That's kind of the way I am. I don't really care what they do. I want to focus on Moore and making it better. Thank you. I'm just not getting over a cold, so, sorry.
All right, Ms. Hill, 45 seconds.
I agree with Mr. Lewis on wanting to make Moore the best city possible to live in. To do that, though, we have to, you know, grow our resources and communicate. Thank you.
And our third question, for the panel of running, candidates running for mayor, and we'll start with Mr. Lewis on this one, is, in the last few years, what have been both the major mistakes and the major accomplishments in the governance of the city of Moore? If there were do-overs, what would they be?
Do-overs? I'm not sure I have a lot of do-overs. There was probably several businesses I would try to work harder on. Some of the mistakes, I'm not real sure, that some of the things we've done, we talked about growth, but we also have ideas on things that we don't want here, some of the things that we've turned down that you don't hear about. We turned down a huge Indian casino. We didn't want that, and we don't, you know, that's not what we go after. So we want to concentrate on stuff like that. You know, they offered us millions of dollars to put it here, and we said no, so, you know, other than that, I'm not sure. I'm pretty proud of the fact and the job that we've done, so, thank you.
Ms. Hill, 60 seconds.
I would have to disagree. A casino can bring in lots of money, and they're not all trashy like most people think. They're really not. I think one of the greatest things about Moore is our Warren Theater. Love that place. One of the biggest mistakes is, we've closed down the Moore Pool now, and I understand that it couldn't be fixed, however, you know, why weren't we working on building pools, you know, a couple of years ago before this happened, where the point that we couldn't fix the pool, and it was cheaper to demolish it than to refix it?
Okay, well, we're actually closing, closing comments now, and that will start with, it should be, Mr. Lewis, 60 seconds to close.
Once again, I'd like to say I enjoy being the mayor. It's the greatest job in the world, and I tell everybody that. I tell everybody, if, you know, if you've never been to Moore, we have lots of things to do, there's plenty of places to eat at, and it's a good place to raise your kids. The school system is one of the finest in the world. We have one of the lowest unemployment rates in the United States. We have 1.6% or less unemployment, so I'm very proud of the things that we've done here. I guess the last thing I'd like to say is, go out March 6th and please vote for me. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hill?
Once again, I've grown up in this town, and I've seen it grow. I did leave for a couple of years, but I've seen it grow as I've come back, and that's great. I can't wait, I mean, to see what the future of Moore holds. Like I said, I fought like the devil to get back into Moore, to get my daughter into preschool in the Moore School System. Other than that, I can't, I would love to, you know, get your vote, see what we can do to make this town grow even more. So, March 6th, come out and vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's have a round of applause for our candidates for Mayor of Moore. For those here in attendance, for those watching on the internet, I can just simply say that there are people all over the world that would love the chance to get to vote. You do get the chance to vote, and people talk about a presidential race, Pat, but your vote actually counts a whole lot more in a local election where there's a smaller turnout, and we need to have people come out and vote.
Absolutely. Your vote in a city election does make a tremendous amount of difference. I know when I lived in Moore a few years ago, there was a city council race that went to a straw, where they had to draw straws to see who won. These races can be very, very close.
We thank you all for being here tonight. We thank all of the candidates for participating, and people who say that politics gets ugly these days should have been here tonight to see what, how good politics can be, and you all should be very proud of your candidates here tonight. Thank you all for coming.